Good evening. We'd like to call this November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five City Commission Meeting to order, please. Can we get a roll call?
Mayor Grunder.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Bloodsworth.
Here.
Commissioner Howe.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
We will have our invocation by Jacob Newton, followed by the pledge. Please stand with us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our kind and gracious Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather here this evening for this City Commission Meeting. I pray for blessings over the proceedings. I pray you'd give wisdom, insight, and direction to our city commissioners, and city manager, city clerk, city attorney. I pray for blessings in favor to be over our police and fire departments in all the ways that they keep us safe and protect us. And I pray, Lord, that we would just continue to live and work in this beautiful city of High Springs with a sense of appreciation for what you've given to us. We give you praise and we give you thanks for it all. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which exists, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll do the approval of the agenda, but it needs to be amended. We need to amend the amended one in order to add on something very special, which is the High Springs Heroes.
I make a motion that we approve the amended amended agenda.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Right. Move on to approval of the consent agenda. Commission meeting minutes, October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Special presentations. We'll move on to the High Springs Heroes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we're closing out this year's recognition of local veterans with a really, really special group. And I want to thank Ms. Valoria Kelly for getting this information to me. We are recognizing veterans that were also went to the Douglas School with the addition of one additional person. And I'm going to read their names off. And then we've got certificates. If any of the veterans would like to tell us a little bit about your service, we would love to hear it. Don't feel like you have to, but we certainly would love to hear from you. Tonight, we are recognizing Staff Sergeant James A. Tony Davis, who served in the Army. Specialist Ford Jaron Davis, served in the Army. Sergeant Theodore Davis, also in the Army. John Dur from the Army. Major Ronald Dur in the Marines. Private First Class Bridget Antoinetta Jones in the Army. Sergeant Maybel Jones, Army. E-four Margaret Ann Kelly, Army. Sergeant Thaddeus Price, Army. Specialist E-four Charles Richard, Army. Sergeant Byron Dwayne Williams. I don't see Byron. I see Ms. Alice, but I don't see, okay, Army. Captain Ronald K. Wilson, Army. And also Lieutenant Colonel Bracha Kellam. You may recall his son Elijah was on the the initial revamp of the Mayor's Youth Council, and he is currently running track in college and doing really well, from what I hear from his parents. So, gentlemen, ladies, thank you for being here with us. We really, really appreciate you giving us the opportunity to celebrate you, to honor your sacrifice for all of us. You make High Springs better, and you make us safer just by being here, and we are so appreciative of all of you. Thank you so much for being here.
I think we need to bring them up for a picture.
Yes, we need.
Can we get a picture?
We'd love a picture.
We'd love to get y'all up for a picture, please.
We need to go out to Captain Wilson if we can.
Yes, we'll come to you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
No, thank you. Is that our last one we're doing?
Yes, that's it for this year.
Well, I want to thank Commissioner White before we move on for having that idea and bringing that forward. That's been such a special part of the commission meetings.
It's been fun.
Thank you. Thank you. And we will move on to unfinished business. Probably the best part of the night has left. We will move on now. Back to business. We will discuss considering act on request for proposals, CDBG grant administration services.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is what was pulled off the agenda. There was some discrepancies with the ranking sheets, the way we did it. Yeah, I've never done it CBG, CBDG before. So, it was a learning process. The way we did the ranking sheets were incorrect. So, we called Florida Commerce. We redid the ranking sheets based on their guidance. We have sent, we have submitted those to Florida Commerce to make sure they're appropriate, and we are all set for tonight, so.
Right. You want to tell us about how they performed?
You have the ranking sheet, so it's pretty much right there. Points are given based on the information they submitted. And they both fared very well.
Does staff have a recommendation as to the one they would like us to move forward with?
I, I like Fox Enterprises. We've used them before, and always gotten a good product from them. However, Cornerstone's packet was very, very well done as well.
Very thorough, just like the others.
Yep, so it's up to you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, please.
Please.
I remember Fox doing a presentation when we were first discussing the CDBG grant, and they did a tremendous job. They were very, very helpful. And I know we have a really good history with them. It's nice to have a couple of different options. It's really nice to have two solid options.
Anytime we have more options, benefits the city.
It's always a good thing, absolutely. But, you know, I do recall meeting them and watched them help us through this process. And I'm very grateful to their assistance over the years, and I would make a motion that we award Fox Enterprises the grant, the contract.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we have any citizen comments for this?
Good evening. Jeffrey Winter, Cornerstone Community Caucus. It's an honor to appear before you all tonight. I see you all have an agenda pretty packed here, a packed room, so I will make this very brief. We would just like to read a couple of emails that have been submitted to staff into the public record. This email is dated October thirty-first at ten forty-nine a.m. Good morning, City Clerk Stone, City Manager Marshall, and EA Malden. It was a pleasure meeting with you all earlier this month for the proposal response opening on ten-six, and an honor to appear before your commission on ten-twenty-three. We sincerely appreciate the opportunity to participate within this procurement process, and we want to emphasize our recognition of the evaluation committee's thorough, objective review of the submitted proposals, and staff's quick action to pause the procurement process before the city took any action that would have resulted in avoidable and costly delays to this critical stormwater infrastructure project. This concern for the city's timely administration of this critical stormwater infrastructure project is compounded by the fact that this CDBG project has already been delayed for fourteen months. That's thirty-seven point eight-four percent of your thirty-seven-month period of agreement that has lapsed without any action, including the completion of this preliminary professional services procurement process, which was due to Florida Commerce on December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, based upon the city's contractual obligations and the effective date of the city's CDBG sub-grant agreement, which is dated September first, two thousand and twenty-four. This means the city, under the guidance of its legacy consultant, will have weathered two back-to-back hurricane seasons in recently disaster-impacted Suwannee County without the intended benefit of the proposed critical stormwater infrastructure improvements at the expense of your residents. If selected, Cornerstone intends to implement an aggressive schedule to bring this project into compliance and on track for completion within the current period of agreement without requiring an extension, utilizing the same approach that we implemented to recover the City of Edgewater stalled CDBG infrastructure project after being selected over their legacy consultant, Fred Fox Enterprises. We plan on being in attendance at the commission on eleven-thirteen, prior to their review of any corrected evaluation scoring sheets and consideration of a contract award. As a courtesy to UN City staff, please accept this email as the formal submission of Cornerstone's formal written protest attached. A copy of the formal written protest has also been submitted to the city via certified mail to be delivered on Monday, and we will hand-deliver a copy to City Hall this afternoon. We've referenced the city's adopted CDBG procurement policy as Exhibit B. However, this exhibit will be formally incorporated upon receipt as we have submitted a public records request to Florida Commerce for this document. In the interim, it is assumed that the city's adopted CDBG procurement policy adheres to two CFR Part two hundred and Chapter seventy-three C dash twenty-three.
Sir, I'll allow you to finish since you're in the.
Thank you, sir. I'll skip through just to the next email. This one's dated November eleventh. Good morning, City Clerk Stone, City Manager Marshall, and EA Malden. We are in receipt of your eleven-six email correspondence, and we concur with Florida Commerce's determination that the revised ranking sheets are consistent with the advertised RFP. However, we respectfully posit that the current scoring is erroneous and subject to rejection based upon our discussions with Florida Commerce Grant Management staff regarding this procurement matter and in accordance with the City of High Springs' current CDBG sub-grant agreement awarded September first, two thousand and twenty-four. More specifically, Attachment D Program One, Program Condition One A of the city's sub-grant agreement states the following. The city shall demonstrate that progress is being made in completing project activities in a timely fashion. Within a hundred and twenty days of the sub-grant award, the recipient, the sub-recipient shall complete the following activities: Request approval of all professional services procurement. Based upon the effective date of the city's sub-grant agreement, this project is currently fourteen months behind schedule, and the professional services procurement package was due by December thirty, two thousand and twenty-four for compliance purposes. At this time, the city is non-compliant with its CDBG sub-grant agreement. Critically, Attachment D Program Five F states, "In procuring services for sub-grant administration, the public notice or the request for proposals must include all criteria that will be used to evaluate and score the proposals." It further states, "Any firm that assists the sub-recipient to developing or drafting criteria used in the RFP shall be excluded from competing for the procurement as required by two CFR two hundred point three-one-nine A." Attachment D Program Six continues, "A written evaluation, such as ranking sheet or narrative, shall be prepared for each proposal, ranking or comparing each proposal to the criteria in the published RFP." Per Attachment D Program Condition Eleven of the city's CDBG sub-grant agreement, "The city must submit the aforementioned public service procurement documentation to Florida Commerce for review and approval of, quote, 'all professional services contracts and/or agreements that will be reimbursed with CDBG funds.'" Program Condition Eleven continues, "Commerce will either approve the procurement or notify the sub-recipient that the program, the procurement cannot be approved because it violates state, federal, or local procurement guidelines." Referencing Cornerstone's proposal response, which I believe you all have in your agenda from when it was pulled on the previous meeting, "In comparison with the city's legacy consultant, Cornerstone, at a hundred and forty-seven years, clearly outperforms its competition at a hundred and forty-two years, within just the first two objective evaluation and scoring criteria alone, which is the staff's number of years of experience with administering projects through small cities' CDBG program, and two, the number of years of experience of the firm's management group with the State of Florida's small cities' CDBG program." Objectively, Cornerstone's proposal response scores higher than the legacy consultant based upon the criteria published within the RFP and reflected within the current revised ranking sheets. As these are both objective criteria, we've consulted with Florida Commerce to confirm they will not approve any professional services procurement wherein an objective scoring advantage exists, and both firms are ranked equally. Utilizing the current revised ranking sheets in the format independently developed by the city, correcting miscalculations tabulated within the evaluation, uh, within the evaluation criterion three of the provided ranking sheet summary, and accounting for the proper scoring adjustments necessary to resolve this formal written procurement protest, we've calculated the final corrected ranking sheet summary tabulations at two hundred and sixty to two hundred and fifty-seven in favor of Cornerstone. For all of the reasons detailed above, we respectfully reaffirm our concern that the proposed course of action, as detailed within the city staff's email correspondence dated November sixth, which was attached, will result in the rejection of the professional services procurement package by Florida Commerce, imposing further substantial delays to this critical stormwater infrastructure project that is already fourteen months behind schedule without any progress to date." That, I appreciate your time, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any commissioner questions? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Do we have any citizen comment on this, or do we have anyone from Fox that would like to speak on this?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Melissa Fox, Fred Fox Enterprises. Just a couple clarifications. We've already started the environmental review process. That process is ongoing and is pretty close to being completed. So, it's not like the project has been stalled and nothing has been done. In addition, we have also met with city staff prior to when you were first awarded and went over the steps. And then city staff has reached out to Florida Commerce for guidance on that. We were not involved in the RFP process other than just to go over the steps with Mr. Marshall here at City Hall and say, "This is what you need to do." I kind of would like to just provide some clarity on the whole City of Edgewater statement that Mr. Winters likes to keep bringing up. We have spoke with Mr. Marshall and given him Sandy Camps. She's the grant administrator for the City of Edgewater. We currently have one project with the City of Edgewater where the grant administrator on. It's a twelve-million-dollar project. We just finished up about a three-million-dollar project. And when we went over the notes that Mr. Winters included about our firm with Ms. Camp, she was flabbergasted and said she does not know where he got that information from. Just to clarify, they were awarded their agreement in May. They were out for bids in June and awarded in July. So, it was not an eight-month, and they did not take us off. They simply just went with Mr. Winters, which is fine. We always are, we're always acceptable with healthy competition. But when competition is not healthy, and he likes to talk about how many years, and I wasn't, I'm not here tonight to bash another consultant. I just keep hearing all of these inconsistencies, and it just, I feel like I owe our firm the, you know, the chance to kind of clear up some of those inconsistencies. When he talks about number of years, he has an employee or a member of his group that has forty-five years' experience. That is impossible. The state did not obtain over the small cities' program until nineteen eighty-four. It's only been forty-one years. So, there's no way possible.
Can we keep, I'm sorry, but can we keep it to High Springs, please?
Yes. So, I just, you know, I want to just, there were inconsistencies that we did not bring up before tonight. And, you know, I, we appreciate the opportunity. If we get the opportunity to continue working on this project, we worked hard in the beginning on the development of the application. We, you know, did that at no charge to the city. We never charge our communities anything to write applications. We did all the grant work, the backup work, the surveying, and all of that. And we would just appreciate the opportunity to continue work for the City of High Springs. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Sam, sorry you had your time.
Okay, I'm just, thank you.
Do we have any other citizen comments? Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded.
Mr. Mayor, before we vote, I just, he's brought up some issues. I'm just wondering, are we behind compliance by twenty-four, twenty-four?
So, if I can, we've been, we've been in talks with, so, again, I messed it up. So, to fix it, we call Florida Commerce. Help us through it. Here's the email we got yesterday from them. "Thank you for reaching out. Per the criteria outlined in the attached email, I do not see anything that would result in the rejection of the procurement. Cornerstone would be well within their rights to protest the award using CBDG funds. At that point, we would take a brief pause, evaluate the protest on its merit. If there's a discrepancy with the scoring, we would ask for justification for the scoring that was given. My leadership team would make a determination as whether it meets the requirements of two CFR two hundred and the program conditions in agreement." So, we're not, they've looked at it. They looked at our ranking sheets. They've looked at everything. We're not going to get rejected. However, if Cornerstone does a timely protest, they will pause and evaluate the protest. And we're, and we're held up on it. Danielle's not here tonight. But the project that we're talking about, the two thirty-six extension, we run into an access issue with a neighboring parcel. And also to compound that, they found a gopher tortoise right on the property line, and that gopher tortoise looks like it's burrowing onto the neighbor's property. We got to have them sign the permit so we can get the gopher tortoise out there, but they're not going to do that until the attorneys. But they're not gonna do that until the attorneys hash out the access issue. So that's where we're at with the CBDG. If Florida Commerce is aware of that.
Good. Any other commissioner comments, concerns? Nope.
See holes in tortoises.
That's High Springs.
That is High Springs.
That's High Springs.
Good Lord. We seem to talk a lot about turtles. Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. I appreciate both, uh, companies showing up tonight. It means a lot. Thank you both for that. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Right. Moving on to unfinished business, item two. Discuss, consider, and act on requests for qualifications for professional engineering services on the CDBG Community Development Block Grant, number 25 DB dash N07.
So this is for the CBGG, um, I'm trying to pull up the right one, Engineering Services. Same, same kinda ranking sheet. We had three come in, CPH, which used to be Mid Tower, Kimberly Horn and Woodard and Curran.
Do we have a preference from city staff?
So CPH scored the highest. We've used them before. We've, um, we've used Kimberly Horn as well. Woodard and Curran is kinda new to us. We haven't used them, but they're a great firm. They got great people. Any of them will be acceptable, but the highest score, basically, I think got a perfect score was CPH. So that's who we're recommending.
Do we have any commissioner comments or concerns? Undertain them.
We've, we've worked a lot with CPH, so that Jared guy's kind of a problem, but you know, other than that, he's.
Working through that, though. Working through that.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we award the, the work to CPH.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second. Do we have any community comments? Okay.
Well, I do have a question. One second. So on the sheet, on the last page, the total point is 300 for firm two and that's Kimberly Horn.
That's CPH.
Sorry, but you're looking at the next one.
So I'm, I'm, I'm. I'm sorry. I see it now. Sorry, y'all.
Okay, good. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Moving on to number three. Discuss, consider, and act on requests for qualifications for professional engineering services on a continuing contract basis.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is your continuing engineering contract. We use these when we have projects that need engineering services. We use a loose rotational, uh, process on it. But the contracts that we have used with, um, CPH and Kimberly Horn, they expired, so we had to put a new one out. Having more than one engineer under, um, consultant is great. We're recommending all three go on to continuing services contracts. That allows, so, you know, CPH is good at sewer. And if I have a sewer engineering, I'll probably send it to them. Kimberly Horn's really good at roads and whatnot. So if I need engineering, I'd send it to Kimberly Horn. I play their strengths, but if it's something general, we kinda go in a rotation system.
Okay. I like the way that sounds. I like new eyes on things.
Yeah, apparently they all three have perfect scores, so.
Is that the sheet I'm looking at right there?
No, you're looking at the wrong thing, I think.
But that's on that.
Yeah, you're right. You got it. You got it.
I see that other page.
Could be, but we're recommending all three anyways.
Yes, sir.
And it's one of those contracts that we're not paying until we consult, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have any commissioner concerns, comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we elect all three firms.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second. Do we have any citizen comments or concerns? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Five oh. We will now enter into the reorganization. I will adjourn the 2024, 2025 city commission.
Let's see how bad I can mess this up. Okay, so it's been adjourned. There should be commission comments. Any commission comments? Mayor, it's been a great year. Thank you for, I'm a better city manager because of it. Thank you.
Thank you. I've thoroughly enjoyed being the, uh, the mayor. I have learned a lot, continue to learn a lot. I've signed a lot of very pricey checks and I'll be very glad next month or not.
Now, the city clerk will administer the oath to Commissioner Tristan Grunder.
My mom told me I had to wear a jacket.
Did you get the right one up there? Not mine?
Oh, no. Wait, if I put your jacket on, it'd just be sleeve.
Yes, ma'am.
And repeat after me.
Yes, ma'am.
I, Tristan Grunder, do solemnly swear or affirm.
I, Tristan Grunder, do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, honor, protect, and defend the Constitution of the Government of the United States and the State of Florida.
That I will support, honor, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the State of Florida.
That I possess all qualifications to hold office under the Constitution of the State of Florida and under the Charter of the City of High Springs.
That I possess all qualifications to hold office under the Constitution of the State of Florida and under the Charter of the City of High Springs.
That I am not precluded from holding office pursuant to Article 6, Section 4 of the Florida Constitution.
That I am not precluded from holding office pursuant to Article 6, Section 4 of the Florida Constitution.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of the Office of City Commissioner on which I am now about to enter, so help me God.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of the Office of City Commissioner on which I am now about to enter, so help me God. Thank you so much. I will.
All right, I will call the 25, 26 commission meeting to order. Roll call by the city clerk.
Commissioner Bloodsworth.
Here.
Commissioner Grunder.
Here.
Commissioner Howell.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
I will now open the floor for nominations for the position of mayor. Is there any nominations from the commission?
I would like to nominate Andrew Miller for mayor.
Second.
Andrew Miller, you've been nominated. Will you accept the nomination?
I accept the nomination.
Don't sound so happy.
Is there any other nominations for the position of mayor? Is there any other nominations for the position of mayor? Is there any other nominations for the position of mayor? Hearing none, I will close the nominations for a position of mayor. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Congratulations. I will now, you will assume the chair and take nominations for vice mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Bloodsworth for vice mayor.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, Commissioner Bloodworth.
He didn't give me a chance to say no. Did you notice that?
Damn.
Oh, man.
All right, do we have any comments? I would like to say thank you all for trusting me, for being mayor this upcoming year. I'm excited to see the city move forward in a positive way. Commissioner Bloodworth, Vice Mayor Bloodworth.
I guess this is how this rolls. I'll do my best. I'll keep City of High Springs in my heart the whole time by sitting in that role. I assure you that and promise you that.
And thank you for the opportunity.
I think it's my turn to make a comment. I'm right there. I wanna say, uh, thank you to High Springs. The citizens truly responded with, uh, the way they raised me. It's exactly the way this played out. It could've gone one way and it did not. It could've been very negative. And for the vast majority, the city stayed positive. This town is a very, very amazing, wonderful, beautiful place to live. We've got great citizens. We've got our problems, but we've got better people. And that was decided and I, I feel so honored to represent this town for a second term. And I will do absolutely everything and anything I can. I can't thank my wife enough, my family, my friends, Dan, you're an audience tonight. I love you, brother. I cannot thank my kids enough for being, for putting up with all this nonsense. I don't know how many 15 and 16-year-old boys volunteered to hold signs when I know they didn't want to, but they did it because they're special. They're good people and they were raised here too. They knew it mattered. I promised my dad last time that, that, uh, I understood what he raised me on saying, which is you get one last name. And whatever you do, you make sure that you keep that last name clean. And I promise we're gonna keep doing that with High Springs. And I just truly, truly, truly cannot tell the citizens how much I, I appreciate them. I love this town. Thank you. Thank you for trusting me.
Wayne, you're coming down here. Sit slow.
All right. Now we'll take citizen comments and requests for issues that are not on the agenda. Uh, please state your name for the record and limit your comments to five minutes, please.
Thank you for having me. I am. Deacon Henry Zmoto from St. Madeline Catholic Church here in High Springs. I'm present today representing our pastor, Father Sebastian George, who is out of town, uh, and specifically to talk about our St. Madeline Community Outreach. With me also is Belle Deifenderefer, who is our Community Outreach Director. For those unfamiliar with us, our St. Madeline Community Outreach is located in downtown High Springs directly behind the Ace Hardware in a building generously provided by the City of High Springs. St. Madeline Community Outreach serves the communities of High Springs, Alachua, Newberry, Fort White, La Crosse, Alachua County, Gilchrist County, Swanee County, and probably some, I'm forgetting about. In a community-wide effort, we serve everyone regardless of race or religion or anything like that. We have been operating for the past 13 years. We are open Monday through Friday and we provide food and other essential items such as toiletries, personal hygiene articles, and we currently serve 500 families twice a week. That's 500 families, not 500, uh, twice a month, I'm sorry. 500 families twice a month. Not 500 individuals, 500 families. In these more difficult economic times, we are fully expecting our numbers to increase to 600 families twice a month, probably in the next month or so. St. Madeline Community Outreach has been under some financial stress. It's been a financial stress for St. Madeline Church. Our parish is running a deficit and our mother church, the Diocese of St. Augustine, requires that we maintain a balanced budget. Earlier this week, we had a meeting with our diocesan chancellor. He's basically the person second in charge after the bishop and he looked very carefully at our community outreach operation and concluded that, uh, what we are doing is currently unsustainable for the parish. And therefore, uh, community outreach is in serious jeopardy of closing. And in fact, at this point, probably closure is probable. Again, for over 13 years, we have been proudly serving the needy without much fanfare or publicity. Our mission, simply put in the words of St. Madeline herself, is to humbly and simply bring the joy of Christ to others. That's our mission. And sadly, with the way things are starting to look, this mission may soon have to end. At a recent commissioners meeting, we were made aware that funding might be available from either the City of High Springs or maybe Alachua County. And this is a crucial time for us and unless additional financial support is found, we will be unlikely to be able to survive. So that is my purpose for being here today. I'm grateful and honored to be able to address all of you and would like, if we can, to find some further information on the possibility of additional funding for this very, very important ministry. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners will respond once we get all the comments, so.
Okay. Guess I sit down.
David Lynch, I beg the city manager and the commissioners not to pave over our beautiful concrete streets. High Springs Brewing, does the city manager and the commissioners want the name of their city associated with a product that kills 7,000 people each day?
Good evening. Sue Weller, I have two items I'd like to bring to your attention. The first one deals with the Rails to Trails project. This city is looking at pursuing the Rails to Trails project again, which is great. I think everybody wants it. The problem is that there is a House bill out there, House Bill 4924, called the Rails to Trails Landowner Rights Act. It was introduced in August, on August 8th, 2025, and it was referred to the House Committee on Natural Resources. This bill will require any state political subdivision or qualified private organization requesting interim recreational use must, one, provide notice to property owners and local governments adjacent to the right-of-way, obtain signed approval from property owners within 30 days of initiating the process, disclose the legal status of the right-of-way, and enclose that any agreement compensates affected landowners for additional costs associated with the interim use with a minimum compensation level at fair market value. I'm requesting that this city reach out to the House Committee on Natural Resources on this House bill and let them know how this is going to affect us, uh, in particular with our Rails to Trails project and that this can hurt us in trying to get this implemented. My second item is, uh, I would just like to know where we are on our fiscal year 24 audit.
Mayor Commissioners, we are currently in the process of completing the 24 audit. It will be done by the end of the calendar year and we've already begun working on 2025's audit. As the year just ended, but, um, but yep, it's well underway. Thank you for checking.
Great, thank you.
Any other citizen comments? All right. Any commissioner comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I may please, um, I don't know where we stand in terms of communicating with the county on, um, that potential project that they were interested in doing. I would be interested in, in seeing what they have available, but we would need to also identify space for that. I would be interested in, in seeing what they have available, but we would need to also identify space for that. So I don't know what the next step is there. I, I'm happy to help however I can. I know that you had spoken, Mr. Mayor, with the Children's Trust about it. Um, so, Mr. Marshall, I don't know where, where you are in the process, but I would like to, uh, you know, could we put that on maybe the next, next meeting's agenda to discuss? Or, you know, what would, what would the next, next most appropriate thing be?
We could put it on the next agenda to discuss, um. There's not much to really act on. As a city, we, we don't have the funding to, to do this. But there is a partnership that we could do with Alachua County.
Right.
And we have talked to them several months ago, but I could bring that back up to the county.
Okay.
And probably do it with the mayor as well, since he wanted to head that project. He's asked me about it, and to be honest, I keep putting him off because I got other fires. But we can revisit that now that things should start slowing down.
Okay. Um, and in terms of the Rails to Trails, Ms. Weller referenced that the city is, is, um, working on Rails to Trails. Are, I don't know that we have discussed it. I know that they discussed it at a Parks and Rec meeting. Um, but what is, what is the city's involvement there?
We're working with the county. Is Amy here? Yeah, Amy's here, and Amy sat in some of these meetings as well. We're, um, we're very interested in pursuing it. The county's got some stuff that they have to do. There's a process. It's a long process for the Rails to Trails. But the, um, they just held the hearing last month for CXX to abandon the property, which would be the first step in acquiring the property. The, so it has to be acquired by a government entity or I forget the term, the term I'm looking for, but there's a land trust out there that would be taking ownership of the property for the public use for the Rails to Trails.
It wouldn't be the city of High Springs taking over the property. It would be the, the, another entity.
Another entity.
Okay.
The city won't own the property.
Okay.
This other entity will. I forget the name of the entity. Um. It is the Controvation, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And so they're going through the process. A lot of this stuff is on the county right now as they want to proceed, because it goes, what they want to do is the Rails to Trails out to Newberry.
Newberry, mm-hmm.
And so the county's kind of taking the lead on that. And probably as they move on, we'll get more involved and
Okay.
push it along.
Okay. I mean, I, I, I think it would be a phenomenal project just in, in so many ways, economically, so many ways.
I gotta keep Amy calm out there. She's, she wants it bad.
It would be, it would be amazing.
She wants it bad, and, and you know, if, if one of my department heads wants something that bad, we go for it, and we're, she.
I just, I just wanted to understand where we are in the process, because we haven't.
Yeah, we're way, way in the infant stages of it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, is this something that Wild Spaces would be involved in as well?
No.
No, no money?
Well, the Wild Spaces, it would be a Wild Space and Public Place, but as far as funding, we wouldn't need it.
Okay.
Not to my knowledge.
I heard, while we did talk about maybe having to come up with some of it from Wild Spaces, Public Place, but not a lot, but just something to show that we have some buy-in for it, which, I mean, if we get Rails to Trails here, that's, that's a game changer. I mean, we're talking about connecting us to, to Newberry, all the way out to the river. I mean, that's a game changer. If we don't jump on this, what are we doing? So, I mean, we've got, we've got to, got to, got to do exactly what Ms. Weller's talking about and reach out and get our lobbyist on it. And we've got to start pushing this thing forward now. That way, we don't lose it. I mean, that, that's a game changer right there.
And as far as our Community Resource Center, when me and Mr. Marshall had our Zoom meeting with, um, the Children's Trust, it was a space. Um, they need a lot of space, so.
How much?
Like the whole museum space, all the rooms in the museum.
They want space, I think.
They need a pretty big.
So do we.
All right. Any other commissioner responses? All right. So discussing considering an act on appointing chair and vice chair to the CRA board. Um, I have had the great privilege of serving the CRA board for two years, um, straight, and it has been a great journey. So if anybody else would like to take over, you're more than welcome. If not, you know, I always hand it back.
Yeah.
I'd like to take it. I enjoyed my time with CRA. I think Amy's a hammer, and I think we just got to put her in front of more nails, and we'll, we'll keep moving forward with our CRA.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Gunder to be the chair of the CRA board.
Second.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sound. All right. Commissioner Gunder, you are now the CRA chair, so we will take nominations for vice chair.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to put my name back in there. I, I enjoy serving on the board, and I think the CRA is very important to the city.
Second. Thank you, mister.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Howell to be the vice chair and CRA board.
Heck, yeah.
Make it easy.
All right.
Y'all stay on that side of the track down there.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sound. All right. Uh, discussing considering an act on appointing and, uh, appointing and reappointing members to the various city boards and committees.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would, um, like to give Mr. Zachary Walter an opportunity to full, to fill a full term. He, he stepped in when a, when a spot was vacated, and he's been doing a phenomenal job. And staff absolutely raves about how responsive he is, how polite he is, and what a great job he's doing. So I would like to nominate Zachary Walter to stay on the plan board.
I'll second that.
Uh, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sound. All right. Um, Parks and Rec's advisory board, three term, three-year term. I would like to say I think it would be a great idea to add somebody new to the Parks and Recs board. Um, I see that we have another male that's interested. Um, I think it'd give a good diversity to the board.
I'm not opposed to that. I know they want to be reappointed, but maybe one of them drops into an alternate spot? And we allow some new blood in there? I'm not, I'm not opposed to that.
Is, is there an alternate spot open, though? I don't know. We have two alternates that they're currently filled, so there wouldn't be that opportunity.
We can't make a third? There's so many rules.
Um, I, I mean, I've gone to a number of their meetings, and they are really passionate, and they really support Jennifer Appleby, which is phenomenal, because, you know, she does about seventeen different people's jobs. So having them support her is wonderful. Um, I would, I would fully support reappointing the two, but I understand what Mr. Mayor says about getting some new blood in. The problem that I would have is I couldn't pick between the two that are asking to be reappointed, because they've, they've been in that role for a long time, and they do a really phenomenal job. Um, would it be possible, here's a question. The, the, the Parks and Rec Board and the Tree Board are essentially the same. Could we put one of the ones requesting reappointment on the Tree Board and not on the Parks and Rec Board? Do they have to, do they have to cross over? Would that be a way to get a little bit more involvement?
So they're the same board, and they meet the same night. Like, they, they do one meeting, and then they get done, and they roll right into Tree Board.
Just like our historical board and our plan board.
It would be, it would be, you could do it. There ain't nothing wrong with doing it. I think it's a great idea. It's just it'd be a little wonky. One person'd be leaving, and then the other person'd be coming in, but there's nothing wrong with that.
Like our historical preservation board and our plan board.
Just two different meetings, but same board.
Yeah, yeah.
I served with both of them on Parks and Rec, Ms. Tremblay and Ms. Hewlett. Um, it is hard, because I agree, uh, putting some new people in there is, is not a horrible idea. So I'm, I gotta be honest, I'm sitting up here pretty torn at this point.
Right.
I'd agree.
Do we have any members and interested members in the audience?
No, see, we have them here. They are not here.
Um, we can have a citizen comment?
Mm-hmm.
Good evening, Sue Weller. Um, I'm here to just let you know that Ms. Hewlett could not be here, because she's in another meeting tonight. But her heart and soul is in this whole Parks and Recreation Board and what good it can do for our citizens. So I'm just here to let you know that she would, would just love to stay on the board. Thank you.
And, and, and at the same time, Joanne Tremblay's heart and soul is with every tree she could ever find.
And I was on the board, the Tree Board with her when it first started. Uh, they're both great people, and I just know, actually, both of them would be crushed if neither one were on the board, I think, so.
I love the fact that we got new people. Can we, can we look into, should we table this one till the next meeting to look into if we can separate some people out? Because I, I just, one of my concerns is I, I would hate to pull one of them off, but I would also hate to shy away somebody who's trying to get involved in the city and say, hey, look, we're not, you know, thanks, but no thanks, because we, I, you know what I mean? Like, I, I don't know. I'm with Commissioner Howell. I struggle. Kevin, cue the Jeopardy music.
Do we know how many terms each person has to term?
That's a good question. Yeah.
I want to say, Ms., Ms. Trem, I'm sorry, Ms. Tremblay, she might be finishing up her first term. I think she got appointed right as I was leaving, or, so.
I know Ms. Davis was in here earlier.
She was, yeah. I mean, we've got some fairly new blood in there, just, just looking at this. Um, Ms. Werner, Dr. Werner, and Jared Howard, I think, were just recently appointed. Those are new as well. Um, and Danny Finn and Monica White are pretty new also, weren't they?
Yeah. Are they new?
So there is some pretty new blood in there. Um, and you know, there may be, it may be well-served to have a mix of the old, and we do have some new. I didn't mean old.
Well, those are.
The veterans, the veteran members, and then some of the newer members. The one thing that I would like to look into is I know all of the other boards, when they reform, elect a new chair. This board doesn't do that, and I think it would be well-served if it did, just for some variability. I don't know if it's required or, or not, but I think it would be a great idea.
With that being said, I'm also wondering, why don't we have, uh, alternates serving in the planning board? We have alternates down here in the Park and Rec Board, so can somebody answer that?
That's a great question.
I meant, we got an applicant right there that can bring a lot to the table.
Yes, sir.
I love that. And we lost one last time. We would put in a bunch of times, but we reappointed and, or we, we appointed somebody else, but we lost that person. They didn't put back in this time, and they were extremely qualified. I'd love to do that.
I'd love to have.
Would you be interested in an alternate? Well, I'll make a motion. We make Mr. Tatum an alternate on the plan board.
If we.
I don't even know if we can do that, but I'm making a motion.
And so I think that is written in that way, too.
Somebody give me a second up here. We can change some stuff.
I'll second it.
But our ordinances do say that the Park Board, Park and Recreation Advisory Board will serve as the Tree Board.
Okay. So we can't, can't do that. That's fine. That answers that question.
So the ordinance says we can't do an alternate on the plan board?
We would probably have to modify that ordinance, would be my guess, but I think that would be a great idea.
I'm all opposed to modifying it. I love it.
Well, I entertain a motion about the Parks and Recs board.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we reappoint the fabulous energy of Ms. Tremblay and Ms. Hewlett. They really are, they're all in, and I appreciate them so much.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sound.
Now, are we gonna entertain for a, a alternate for the, uh, plan board? Did we say we can do that or not?
She's looking at it right now.
While we're waiting on that, I just want to say that I hope Mr. Timothy doesn't get frustrated, and he can attend those meetings and
Oh, yeah.
be a part of it.
For sure.
I know that they're trying to do a lot of other things. Uh, hopefully, we're bringing back the frozen foot, and, and so.
I talked to him. He really wanted to be here tonight, and, um, he refs soccer or football.
High, high school soccer.
Yeah, and he's at a game tonight, so I talked to him. He called me just, he wanted me to express to the commission that he is interested in.
Yeah, he's extremely involved in the community, and it would be a, it'd be a benefit. He's, he's been reffing now for years, and kids are here playing and.
I think he's coaching.
Coaching as well, coaching, reffing. Guy's got no Saturdays.
Our ordinance is written, we do not have alternate positions written in there. I mean, we could reach out to the attorney's office and see if that's something that we could possibly bring back at a later time. But you could go, still go ahead and move forward if you want it, you know, and then we can have, bring that ordinance back, and then we can always appoint anytime during the year, just like when we, they vacate.
Without requesting anybody resubmit, we've got a second person that's applied. Could we?
Correct. We could still use his application.
Okay, great.
As long as he's open.
Great.
So do I need to?
Do we need to make a motion for that?
I think the.
You can just give staff direction. I'll go ahead and send Danielle and.
We'll get hold of the attorneys.
Okay.
Add it to an agenda. Great idea.
All right. Item number three, discussing considering an act on authorizing the following personnel to sign checks and investment documents in compliance with Section two-dash-nine-seven.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is your annual who's allowed to sign checks. Right now, it's myself and Angela for staff, and then it was Mayor Gr, at the time, Mayor Gunder, Vice Mayor Miller. We got to update it with the new, um, commission appointments.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the mayor, vice mayor, city manager, and city clerk to sign checks and investment documents.
I'm sorry, you'll have to add our names, just because the base were required.
Andrew Miller, Wayne Bloodsworth, Jr., um, Jeremy Marshall, that is your, still your name, and Angela Stone.
Second.
Do we have any citizen comments? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sound. All right. It passes. Agenda item number four, discuss considering an act on for the Department of Law and Enforcement.
Can you grab Chief real quick? This is his item.
All right. Countywide residential, I mean, residual fund grant.
Well, I see already that it says financial impact on the city zero. Pretty big fan of that.
And our radios are sixteen years old.
You saw that?
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations on your appointment as mayor. Congratulations, vice mayor. Congratulations on reelection.
Thank you, sir.
So, um, today I'm here to present an award. Uh, I'm sorry, we've been awarded sixty-five thousand dollars in a grant. Just to give you a little background, on the grant, it is a residual, uh, grant. We got a contact from FDLE and said, hey, we got some leftover money. Our agency jumped on it immediately, which is good, because within the first thirty days, those funds have dried up. And all of the agencies in our area have, were unable to acquire that funding. So the sixty-five thousand, um, would be dedicated to replacement of ten radios. These are some of our older radios. They're about sixteen years old. Um, we plan to take some of those radios and donate them over to the fire department. They don't have any spare radios, though. Uh, the radios that we're getting, they're very reasonable in cost. Um, they're not exactly where we want to be in terms of technology. You usually want to get smart radios, but we cannot afford those, those radios. We're not there today. We'll have to be there in another time, but smart radios are twice as much. They have a reoccurring fee. And the benefit of them, that you can pretty much use them based off of cell towers. Some of the hotspots in our areas is our schools. We cannot communicate a lot of times inside the schools, but smart radios can. I think that's pretty much on the radios. Uh, I know it's a very important question in terms of financial impact. We're on board with this commission and with the city manager. There's zero financial, um, impact, because we want to be a cottonness of the budget or any type of project that we get. We do not want to, um, impede or affect, um, our general funds. So with that in mind, um, any questions, I'll be glad to, to answer.
Any commission?
My goal in the future, Chief, is to get you those smart radios.
Yes.
We've got them at, at GP. We've got them at, at GPD, and they are, they're a game changer whenever you're in that, that hot moment. You've got to find somebody, and you can look at the GPS right there on the radio.
Correct.
I really want you guys to get those in the future. I understand this is, this is, this is what we got right now.
Yes, absolutely.
Cannot tell you how much I appreciate you working with us on the, the getting that grant and then the fact that it's zero money to us.
Absolutely.
So thank you so much. You've been absolutely killing it with the grants lately, and that is exactly what we need right now in this moment.
Thank you.
I gladly make a motion that we accept this grant.
Second.
Any citizen comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sound.
Thank you, sir.
That's why the chief brought all the other officers in here to make sure there's no citizen comment.
That's right. That's right.
All right, agenda item number five, discuss considering act on services agreements between the City of High Springs and Hoffman Construction for the pre-stated roof structure and roof replacement.
So we're finally at that point, so they can get started. Hoffman is who our architect recommended you decided to go with. This is to allow them to basically start. I think, I remember Ashley Molder after today. I think she says they got to get started within 15 days of the contract being executed. It's either 15 or 30, but you'll start seeing some work very shortly.
Exciting. That is very exciting.
It is exciting. Every time the wind blows, I hold my breath thinking that thing's going to fall down.
I just think that that, that building can bring so much to the, to the middle of the city. I really do.
I agree.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the contract with Hoffman Construction for re-roofing the priest theater.
Second. Any citizen comments? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sound. All right, agenda item number six, discuss considering act on the ordinance 2025 dash zero seven and ordinance amending the adopted fiscal year 2025 budget.
Diane Wilson, Finance Director. This is our year-end budget amendment. We need this every year. What we're doing is making sure that the final approved budget is greater than what our expenses were. By state, we need, by state statute, we need to be within our budget at the end of the year. I'll go through quickly with the highlights of it. In your backup, you'll see there's lots of changes where we have ins and outs within each department or within each fund, and that's just to true up the line items so that each line item is covered by an appropriate budget. I will address anything that's in between the funds and anything of any significance that we want to mention. So in the general fund, there's a couple of things we can look at. The first thing is sale of fixed assets. So the police department sold two vehicles, or sold one vehicle, returned one of the leased vehicles, and when Bancorp sells those vehicles, if there's a profit, it comes back to us. What we do is we have to add a budget for that revenue coming in, and then we have to add a budget for the expenses to use those funds. So again, you'll see the ins and outs throughout your document. Insurance recovery, we had a lot of insurance. It's not a really great thing. This year, we had several police vehicles that hit deer. We had a Parks and Rec pickup truck that burnt down to the ground, literally. We had a canopy cover in Parks and Rec that was destroyed during the hurricane. Because it was insured, the FEMA group said, no, we're not going to pay for it because you have insurance coverage, so that worked out. So again, you can see we had $78,000 worth of insurance proceeds, so we have to budget that we had those coming in, and then budget them within the departments to allow those departments to have that funding. So when we do this, we basically just take the department's budget as it is, and we add on the additional for whether it's FEMA or insurance recovery. We also had FEMA recovery. We've only so far received Debbie, and not all of it, and the debris removal or the debris cleanup for Helene. So we have over $100,000 we're still waiting on, and I go in and I check it every single day. And those funds come to us through the state, so FEMA gives them to the state, to the federal Department of Emergency Management, and then they pass it on to us. So they have a website. Go in and check it all the time. It's been sitting in the comptroller or finance office, the four different segments we're waiting for, for well over 200 days. So it's one of those, there's, I just have to wait. So we're keeping an eye on that, but like I said, we have over $100,000. About $60,000 of that goes to sewer for grinder pump replacement from the damage from the power surges and for their labor costs. So again, we're staying on top of it, but at this point, it's in a holding pattern that I can't really do anything to speed up. So the FEMA recovery, when we get it, it goes into the fund it belongs to, so like that $60,000 for the sewer will go into revenue within sewer, and then it'll go to an expense line item within sewer. What we've gotten so far is all general fund money. It's in the general fund as revenue, and then we allocate the expense side. We add to those expense budgets. And the other piece for the FEMA, so we had submitted the Boy Scout and Garden Club building to FEMA for the damage, and they said because it's insured, you end up in a better position. This is them, not me. Therefore, they wouldn't pay for anything in relation to that. So we had a $9,400 deductible, $9,450 deductible. So we fortunately had more revenues than we budgeted, so we're able to put that line item in there to pay that deductible. We also, in finance, we had hired, we've talked before, we've got a consultant that's been assisting with trying to untangle the finance numbers that we have in the general, in the chart of accounts. So they've been working with us, and we're also working in overlapping audits. So we had exceeded the budget on that in '25. And also, this year, we moved, in '25, we had moved a lot out of IT into the departments they belong in, and we budgeted the Springbrook software, which is our financial software system that we all use. And we budgeted 14,575. That's what we thought when we were doing the budget. During the year, we found out, IT found out from Springbrook that the cost was higher, so we exceeded the expense on that. And I've also been paying any of the property tax that we have to pay on city property. I've been paying it out of finance just so it's in one place and we know where it is. CRA has to pay their own, and it's in their budget, but this is just for the handful of properties that we have that are not being used for public use, and we have to pay property tax. And then the only other part in the general fund was the LDC rewrite. As you know, we assigned ARPA money for that. We've had one invoice during fiscal year '25, and so we went ahead and amended the budget for that so we could pay that, and then the remainder will roll forward to 2026 to pay for the rest of it. In fire, there's also insurance recovery there. One of the trucks was damaged during the hurricane, and the damage recovery for that, that we got from the insurance company was over $25,000, so that was added to the revenue line and to the expense for repair and maintenance of vehicles. And then we also had budgeted from ARPA $125,000 towards the new truck that has not yet been delivered. And so what we did is we pulled that out of the expense, and we're going to roll, we're rolling forward the ARPA money into 2026. So when that purchase is made, they'll have the budget for the expense and for the revenue coming in from ARPA. And then the priest theater appropriation, we didn't have anything budgeted at the time. It was all still in progress. So we added the budget for receipt of the installment. If you'll recall, we get installment payments based on certain milestones. And so we did receive the first one, other than the purchase of priests. That was the only other money that we've received so far. For $172,000, that will just remain in that fund. We have the priest theater set up in a separate fund, so it's not commingled with anything else. And then we've had to pay so far for project engineering, $44,000, utility expenses, and the cost to move the projector. So those have all been expensed out of that fund, and we're putting the appropriate budget in place. And Wild Spaces, there's not a change to the overall budget, but when we started Wild Spaces, CRA, we had put in, we did the same thing with transportation. We put in a placeholder for projects because we hadn't identified projects when we were setting up the budget. So we took whatever the available funds were. We just made a line item that put them in there for projects. Now, once the year went on, we obviously had gotten approval to do the sports fields, reconstruction of those out at the sports complex. And then final bill for Parks Master Plan came in during '25 as well. We had budgeted $20,000, and the final bill was just about $31,000. So again, this just moves those out of one line into another. And that is it. Like I said, you'll see, when you look at the backup, there's several ins and outs of smaller dollar amounts within each of the funds, I mean, within each of the departments and within the funds, but these are the highlights that are the significant numbers that I addressed. So if you have any questions on anything, please let me know.
I do have a question. How much longer do we plan on contracting someone to help with our finances?
We should be done after this year, so we probably have, I would say, less than six months. They've helped us kind of untangle what was going on with the chart of accounts. So we've made corrections to the years that we've already gotten through. Like we said, we're finishing '24 now. We're about to start '25. And in the process of doing '25, they're going to help us reset the chart of accounts where we were reset incorrectly on the chart of accounts back in '22. It's been really difficult because we've been going back in time, and it's really hard to go back and change that chart of accounts historically, so we're going to try to do it for '25. So once they help us do that, then we should be done with them.
And then I just had a question about the soccer fees. It went from 14, 128 to 32.
I'm glad you mentioned that. So that, the, the fees next to that are just a note to show, so what's there is, let's see what page, my glasses on. So if you look at page six, at the bottom of page six, this is Parks and Rec's general fund budget, and this is all their expenses. Towards the bottom, on the right-hand side, I just made a note of how much revenue has come in to offset those expenses. So the soccer expenses came in at $26,370, but we collected over $32,000 worth of fees. So Jennifer has just expanded the programs tremendously. And the volleyball expenses, we had total expenses of about $14,000, and we brought in $16,000. So for this year, both of those programs were self-sustaining. So I just wanted to make a point that while it looks like we went over budget on expenses, we actually had much more revenue that came in because we had more programming done.
In general, if I may, Mr. Mayor, that's generally the case for all Parks and Rec-related activities. It's pretty much pass-through. It's not actually costing the city.
It depend, yeah, it really just depends on the, the fee structure and the organization. We've been focusing or trying to get a little more focused on trying to identify what the actual cost is to have these sports, and so a couple of years ago, we added in the individual sports lines for not just the fees, but also for the expenses, so that we could see how those two were balancing out, and that's been really helpful. I mean, it's a very high level, but at least it gives us a place to start.
Do we have any citizens, I mean commissioner comments? All right, entertain a motion.
The, I'm sorry, wastewater impact fees, can you, can you tell me where the actual numbers on that is for the, what's in there right now?
Yep, so the impact fees have, on the wastewater side, we are down to basically zero after fiscal year '25. So we had used during fiscal year '24, we used $960,000 in the sewer budget for operating. And then this year, we used $394,000 in 2025. We had also budgeted infrastructure of $585,000, which we did not use. We did not need that, so that rolled back into the infrastructure fund.
You're looking at page 24 for us?
I'm looking at page 14.
14, I'm sorry. 24's got the, those numbers on it, too. So we're at zero in the, in that fund going forward?
As of the end of fiscal year '25. So as new construction comes on or as impact fees are coming in, they will be added to that fund balance.
Any other questions from the commission?
The 2.2 million.
Reduction?
Yeah, that's.
That's because we budgeted for the entire remainder of the project to be built out during '25, and it wasn't, so that just brings that down to match the spending during that period of time. And we can bring back financials for '25 and have a conversation about where we ended up. The only thing that you're approving right now is just that the budget itself is amended. It's not reflective of anything other than for kind of a, I'm trying to think what the word is. It doesn't change anything that we've spent, or it doesn't allow us to have any additional spending. It just makes sure that the budget that's adopted as amended will be sufficient to cover the expenses, just to meet state statute, so. It's a formality. That was the word I was looking for.
This is required housekeeping.
Yes, yes, but it doesn't change anything as far as what you're allowed to spend or.
I don't think I have anything else.
All right, all right, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2025 dash zero seven on first reading.
I'll second.
All right, any commission, I mean, any citizen comments? All right, this is a roll call vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bloodsworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Grunder?
Yes.
Commissioner Howell?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
All right, it is passed. All right. Agenda item number seven, discuss considering act on eval Q water invoice.
So this is an invoice that we got for the sewer project, and we, the bill was from two years and nine months ago, so we found out, we've been emailing the vendor to find out why it's so late. The reason it's late, it was not late, is when we did it, so this bill is for the construction of, tell me if I'm wrong, Jared, it's construction of the new tank, and then the rehab of the old tank. They can't, they weren't, the way the contract was written, they couldn't bill until it was completed. So now that that, their portion of it is completed, that's why we're getting the bill now, almost three years after the PO was signed. This is part of the project, but with it being so much, I brought it to the commission for you guys to take care of.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can just add, the agenda item, word for, to give to Jeremy to put in the agenda item, it says impact fees, it's infrastructure fees. Because as, as Commissioner Grunder pointed out, those have been exhausted, but there's over $1 million in the infrastructure fees that are available. And the other piece that's really important is, that I want to mention, is the cash side of it. So in order to pay this bill at the end of the month, we will need to use the cash out of the emergency fund. On paper, it will be an IOU, so to speak. It'll be a due-to, due-from. So, it will be booked accordingly and show that that's being used. And the reason that is, is that because we have such a deficit in the sewer system and we've been paying the bills and getting revenue through the general fund, we have that deficit that we're not getting that cash. So, for example, we have over $1.5 million deficit in the sewer system. We talked about this a little bit during the budget. And that's kind of why the increase to the customer charge is a very temporary fix. So, we have on our books in the general fund, somebody owes us $1.5 million. Well, that means we don't have that $1.5 million that's an asset to us in cash because it's an IOU, it's not cash. So, what happens is we get a bill for $900,000 that we're not planning on. It's not in our normal cash flow. It's not in our normal business process. We don't have $900,000 sitting in the general fund for such an emergency. And it kind of goes back to what we talked about. This, instead of having something break, we got a bill we didn't expect. So, it's really no different than if we had a huge sewer leak and it cost us $900,000. This is kind of the emergency we've been talking about during budget, which makes me very nervous and makes Jeremy very nervous. So, instead, we have a bill. So, we have to pay, I can't hear. So, we have to pay the bill at the end of the month. And to do that is going to clean out our cash. Now, in the interim, we're going to be getting other cash coming in. So, it's not like that stops business that day. In the meantime, we have property tax starts coming in in November and usually it's in pretty big chunks at the beginning of the year. We have, obviously, monthly billing comes in. That's over $150,000 when it comes in. We have $160,000 that we recently paid for the wastewater treatment plant and it's reimbursable. We should be getting that back anytime. So, it's not, it's an, it's a very fluid system with the cash coming and going. But in the meantime, I feel really strongly that you guys need to give us permission to use that cash and for you to be fully aware that that, that's our cushion. That's our cash cushion. And I, I don't know how many other ways to say it. We are in a spot and I've been saying it and now it's happened. Now, we have a bill instead of an accident, which I'd rather have a bill than an accident. But this just, it, it solidifies that we need to speed up our long-term planning, short, long-term.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, sir. So, what this bill actually means is that this project went about a million dollars over budget.
Well, what I've learned since we started this is that back in early February of 2023, it was identified that we would be paying this bill out of our share, our matching fund, so to speak. And that bill totally went off the radar for me. That whole amendment was done by management. We didn't have it in our files. Maybe I missed it. Maybe I should have known it was there. I, I very well could have missed it. I'd been here about six months and was still trying to figure out what was going on. So, I may have missed it. I don't know. But we did, the documents that I've gotten since we got the bill and started doing research, we did not have downstairs in finance. For whatever reason, that's why. I don't, I don't know, but.
Well, I understand that the goal, from talking to Mr. Marshall, that the goal was to carve off the purchase of that, that large budget item to have the city buy it directly to avoid paying property, or sales tax on it. That makes sense. But at some point in that process, that large purchase was never reconciled to your office, to the engineer, that we still have a million dollars that we're going to have to pay. That, that never reconciled. Is that accurate, Jared? I mean, you, I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
You want to come up to, will you come up to the microphone, please? Jared Petrovich with CPH. Yeah, once the PO was issued, then it was at the city level and that was always in the budget from our standpoint. So, yeah, a little history. The project bids first came in, it was sixty, had $6 million in grant funds. Phase one of the project bids came in around 9 million. So, the city pledged at that time when we, you know, to, to move the project forward and award the construction contract to the contractor, $3 million between ARPA and impact fees and $6 million from the grant funds. There was a phase two of the project and DEP and Twanee River Water Management District really wanted to see the project come to fruition, do the environmental benefits and the need for capacity. It's one of the largest infrastructure projects in the city's history, doubling the plant capacity. So, we went back to DEP, worked with city staff and they awarded additional 4 million. That allowed it, that allowed phase three to come into play, which was $3 million. And then that leave the city 1 million of their $3 million pledge. So, there were still 2 million pledged by the city at the time, at the commission meeting for, between ARPA and impact fees. So, at the end of the day, the project was about 10 million in grant funds and 2 million in, in city, you know, funds that were pledged. So, that's a, that's a good deal. And that, that was the best DEP, you know, we tried to work with them, try to get, we asked for the most, you know, for the max amount. And that's kind of what was worked out. So, and then shortly after the ODP process, owner direct purchase process was pursued, saved about $100,000 for the city on taxes. That way, the city kind of issued POs for identified, you know, equipment on the project. And it was about 1.6 million in all the, you know, the identified equipment. And then the POs were issued between the city and those various vendors. And that was change ordered out of the construction project. So, and that was part of the city's 2 million pledged amount, so.
So, when that was change ordered out, obviously, for you guys, that comes off your financial radar. That's now the city's responsibility.
It was always, yeah, tracked in this, in the overall budget. But, yeah, once the POs were issued, it was then, you know, tracked at the city level.
Okay. And in terms of impact fees, when we pledged a million dollars in impact fees, did we have the impact fees then ready and available?
The majority of that was bridal wood.
Okay, so now there, I'll stop you right there.
In advance was one of the, I can tell you the plans.
I, I know that plan and I was not in support of that plan.
I don't disagree. That was my, my opinion was also shared that we should not pre-spend any money, especially to that extent. When the secondary funding came in, we were advised by the then-city manager that we had gotten more, and I remember sitting here in a, in a budget, in a meeting, talking about this, that we had gotten awarded more money and we didn't have to, we could release the ARPA funds and the impact fee funds because we didn't need them anymore. Because we had, which obviously is not really the way it was, but that was the information that we were given.
Who gave us that information?
That was from the city manager at the time. Because she came back and was very happy that we had gotten more money and that we wouldn't need to put in money. So, there was a lot of miscommunication at that time. At that time, upstairs did not communicate with downstairs. I was new. I should have probably known better. I don't know, but whatever. I was still trying to figure out where all the money was. But so, to that extent, that's all I really, I mean, we've researched these and tried to figure out what the paper trail and where things went and, you know, like the change order. I know that there were several items on that. There's another half a dozen or so that were smaller items between 160,000 and down to, I don't know, 20,000 or something. And those we had paid. We had gotten those. They went to the public works director. They were approved, they were paid. But I never saw the actual change order that went downstairs that had the million dollars on it. And it was just, you know, the public works director said, yeah, we're just buying those ourselves. They're done and away they went, so.
How does that happen?
How does that happen?
Great question.
How do they just go away?
Great question.
How do they go away? No, I meant that he said, no, we just bought those ourselves. They weren't going to be part of the SGS contract and signed off them, them being paid. And so, we paid them.
But shouldn't spending in that level hit us at some point or somewhere? Or hit the budget in some, some way or somewhere?
Yes. Mr. Marshall, what's your spending limit?
But it did not.
What's your spending limit? Twenty-five thousand. So, you're authorized to sign a PO for $25,000, but not more without commission approval?
Correct.
And this is a $900,000 purchase order that was signed?
The purchase order is 1.1 million.
Okay.
We paid 100,000 upfront and, again, this is from tracing it. We paid, we paid 100,000 upfront and so there was another million. We paid, we paid recently $50,000 on it as well.
So, I want to say your last name. Is it Petrovich?
Yes, that's correct.
Did I nail it?
Yeah, you nailed it.
Very good.
It's been my most nerve-wracking moment this evening. Have you met with us since 2023?
We were, we've been, you know, meeting at the city level. So, we have monthly construction project meetings at the construction site. And, you know, we, we go through budget, things like that. So, once the city pledged that 2 million and then, you know, we're told the owner direct purchase process, which was talked about at a commission meeting at the time, yes, we want to pursue that, saves $100,000. That triggered the 1.6 million. The contractor, us, worked with the city and that got that to the city level. And that was still in the overall project budget. But, you know, we were told that was approved and, and good to go. That was part of the city's 2 million pledge, so.
Right.
So, the PO that I see from the Iqwa Water Technologies, the 1.05 million, correct? That's a million, 1,555,131. That sound right?
Yep, yep.
And you, and we paid part of that already?
We paid 100,000 at the very beginning when that first was signed, is my understanding. That was one that Bruce signed.
And then we recently heard more?
Yes, we paid 52,000 a couple of weeks ago.
We paid on the bill?
We've only paid, initially that you had to pay 100,000 upfront. Then we paid another portion that was 52,000 just a couple of weeks ago. And then we got, that was about the same time we got the $900,000 bill.
So, that 52,000 was a separate bill?
It was a separate component of the project. There was a 85%, 5%, 10% pieces. And so, yeah, so we paid the 10% upfront. The 85 and the 5 were still outstanding. We paid the 5 because it's 52,000.
Yeah, as I understand it, when you look at that, sorry, I guess they do 10% on delivery of the equipment. And, and this Evoque was the majority of the equipment act, for the actual project. It's the equipment that goes inside of the two major treatment tanks. So, I guess it was arranged where they do 10% on delivery and, you know, they have certain milestones and they finally finished up their work recently. So, that's what.
So, 85% is due when the, when the project is complete?
All right, so that's that issue, but this is the other issue that I'm having with this. So, this bill was due September the 10th. That mean you got this bill in August?
No, we just got it. We just got it. It's date stamped.
This is what it says, September 10th up here. So, you just got it when?
September 22nd. And we've been trying to research and figure out what is going on. And, I mean, Jared was great and was like, yes, that is for that. Because the bill that we got, you might notice, all it has on it is a grant number and a lot of zeros. So, we had to do a lot of digging and make sure that we knew what it was for and figure out what else we had spent. We had to go through all the finances of the project to see if we had spent, you know, in other places, that share that was ours and what the tracking was on it. So, it took us a little bit of time to go through it.
So, we got no, like, updates that this bill was coming up because that caused us almost $15,000 that we are now paying it now instead of on time. So, we had no updates that this bill was coming up?
Oh, you're talking about the late fee, I apologize. No, we've been, we've been talking to this company. We've been going back and forth with them, trying to get information from them as well as internally and as well as with CPH. So, we've been working with the company. The company knows it. I mean, we've been emailing back and forth and we've been calling them and trying to figure it out because when we got it, we had no idea what was, where it had come from.
So, we're still going to be charged the late fee?
No, we've talked to them already about that. So, we're, we're negotiating that with them. We've already been in communication with them about that. Because we had, we just finally got this afternoon, we finally got, we've got the emails I shared with Jeremy, that we finally got back from the, I don't know if it's the owner or the, what his capacity is. But the person we were working with did not have information on why it took so long to get the bill. Because we did not know it was a bill that was coming after the project was completed on both things, the rehab of the new, of the old plant and building the new plant. And these had been delivered, of course, you know, over a couple of years ago. And normally, we had gotten all the other invoices that were part of the ODP a year and a half, two years ago, and those had all since been paid. So, in looking at, doing the research, we don't, we didn't know why we were getting this so late. And so, it took time working with the company and searching through our own records to find out. So, they, we've been in constant contact with them since we received the bill, trying to figure out what's happening.
But to your point, Mayor Miller, is we got the bill on September 22nd. I think I was at the ICMA conference, came back. And what I had staff do was first find out what this bill is. Because if you look at the PO, all it says is the bill and then just a project number. Doesn't say what it is. So, we researched, got ahold of them, got ahold of CPH, wanted to find out, is this a valid bill? And how do we, you know, is this something that the grant is supposed to reimburse? This is when we found out about the direct purchasing. So, it took time for me to get the research. And as soon as I got a week's worth of data, I called each of you in one-on-one and showed you what was going on. So, I got this to you just as fast as I can, probably within three weeks of it being, gave us three weeks of research and then, that's why it's been a couple of months. But we talked to them, you know, it's been two years, nine months, see if they could waive the late fee, out save us, I think, 17,000. So, we're working with them. But we just heard back from them today on why it took so long.
How often do we meet for construction meetings?
Once a month.
You guys go over the budget? You go over what's outstanding, what's coming up?
Yeah, for the construction contracts. So, when these were on direct purchase and budgeted by the city, it was kind of, it was, we, we, we didn't interact with the vendors at that point. It was all coordinated between the city and.
And we had it delivered on property, I take it? So, that you guys, or that the construction crew could get to work? So, when we, we, when we give a PO, we don't, are we not tracking it moving forward that it's not been paid? Are we not, are we, do we not have some sort of system that tells us, hey, we've issued this PO, it's not been closed out, it hasn't been dealt with, it's just sitting? And wouldn't, and then second part to that question. Wouldn't then the company that we pay money to every year to audit us? Shouldn't, wouldn't they have picked up on this?
I would agree with you on all counts, yes. It's in the system. When a PO is set up in the system, it remains open. I'm trying to figure out that one piece right there. We've been looking at, Grace and I have been looking at it together, trying to figure out why that PO did not roll. Because it should have been in our reporting at the end of '23 to show that. So, I will definitely bring an answer back to you on that because we're having the same.
I'm almost, I'm concerned about, we had an outside auditor auditing our books and they didn't pick this up. And there again, we pledged money we didn't have by past administration. And then we were hoping to cover it up by another project. I mean, I appreciate you being transparent with all this. We can't find ourselves in this mess again going forward. I mean. This is what we've done so far. Since September 22nd, or maybe the week after by the time it got to my desk, I'm trying to solve the problem. The problem is, we have this bill, we've got to pay it. Now that we're here tonight, we are also looking, we've been working this week to make sure there's no other out there. So, we looked at what the whole process, or the whole owner's direct purchasing was to make sure that all the money that was obligated by the city has been paid. We want to make sure there was no more out there. So, first got to solve the problem, make sure there's no more problem out there. And then we're looking to make sure, what can we do to make sure this doesn't happen again? Because no, we can't, we can't take another million-dollar punch on the chin.
So, Ms. Diane, is there, like Commissioner Grunder just pointed out, rolling over, is there not anything triggering that to say? And with the outside auditor, I'm, I'm lost at how this wasn't found. Am I asking the right question here?
You are, you are, you are definitely asking the right question. It's, it's, piggybacks right on what Commissioner Grunder asked to. Traditionally, those would show up at the year-end reports. So, like I said, that's why I want to look and see what exactly, again, this is from three years ago. So, I've got to kind of trace back. At the time, we would not have started the '23 audit yet based on our.
Oh, by being behind, is that why?
So, they would, yeah. And which is made why these audits have been so difficult because they've all been so late that you're trying to figure out what happened with the whole chart of account change in the middle of it and. and figure out where everything is. So I want to go back and really revisit that, because I don't, I don't have an answer on the PO rolling part.
I could see where you're saying that we're behind on audits when you came in. And if they're not getting that audit completed on time, stuff's gonna fall through.
Right. But, but again, I need to look at the, the system, and how the system handles those at year-end again, and just kind of make sure.
But you have safeguards on our tracking system, or paying bills, or whatever, that we're not, do we have software for such as that?
It's in the financial software. And typically, these would be things that we would all know about. You know, I mean, it's, you, if you have a PO for that, you're gonna remember it, you know? And, and it probably went across my desk at some point. I mean, this was February of 23 when it was signed. You know, Grace would have had to enter it in the system, and I would have had to click a button to say okay. So I'm, I'm sure I probably saw it back then.
It is in our system.
But it wouldn't have, well, it was at that time, because we printed it out. Yeah, we printed out a PO, so it would have had to been in the system. So, but again, I'll, I'll take another look at it. There was really not, I'm, I don't know. I'm not gonna make excuses, because the reality is, you guys all know what a complete disaster our communication was back then. And so there was a lot I did not know. But it was my responsibility to know, even though I was new. So, no matter what I say, it just sounds like I'm making excuses. So you, you all are aware of the situation.
Mr. Mayor, I, I recall speaking with Mr. Marshall's predecessor very directly about receiving advanced impact fees to fund whatever. And I remember very specifically disagreeing with that approach. So it appears that that approach was pursued regardless. And, and then I recall, just, just happenstantially, in chambers before a meeting, asking the previous Public Works Director how the project was going. And his answer was something like, I wouldn't know. What do you mean, you wouldn't know? Well, I'm not allowed to go to the construction meetings. What do you mean, you're not allowed to go to the construction meetings? Now, this was a casual conversation, I was not directing him, I was not violating charter, so let's get that out there right now. So I invited myself to the next construction meeting. I've met Jared a couple of times. I was denied access to that meeting by Mr. Marshall's predecessor very directly. I was not permitted to attend. I was allowed to go to a meeting afterwards. There was a special meeting just for me afterwards, because I've been asking about the budget all along. When we started with this project, I asked Mr. Marshall's predecessor where our contingency was. Where's our 10% contingency? We didn't have a contingency. Now here we are. So it appeared to me, after the previous Public Works Director advised that he was not invited to go to those meetings, that I received copies of who was attending those meetings. And there was not somebody from City Hall regularly attending those meetings, which was really pretty disappointing to me. This is not Richard's job. That's, that's for people here to be taken care of. And, I mean, Jared, you could, you could maybe confirm that. But for the most part, early on, there was, in my opinion, inadequate representation at that meeting.
Oh, that's correct, yeah. And we, Richard was there at every meeting.
Of course he was.
And we were, you know, thought, hey, this is one of the largest infrastructure projects in city's history, we need some.
But it's not Richard's job to sign a nine hundred thousand dollar PO and not tell your finance director about it.
Right, yeah.
So I, I've, I have tried in earnest to plug myself in, and I was denied access. And now I'm kind of understanding why.
Well, it's no different than the garbage contract.
That's right.
I asked, I asked multiple times to be in those meetings, and was not allowed to be in those meetings. And we know how that went. So I, I.
Well, this is the reality, this is where we are now, we have to pay this bill. Mr. Marshall, I appreciate the fact that you've done a lot of research. And I would like questions to Commissioner Grunder's, or answers to Commissioner Grunder's questions. Because this is a big, this is a big hole that has caught us unaware. I do want to take a moment, though, to commend our engineer and the construction group, because the number of sinkholes those guys are chasing out there, people probably aren't aware of. And the number of Saturdays and Sundays SGSs, people spent on-site crafting a site-specific slurry to plug those sinkholes. They've put in tremendous effort. And everything I've heard of is that those infiltrated wetlands are, are operating beautifully. Total nitrogen numbers that we're seeing coming out of there are lower than we had hoped. So, you know, the bright shiny side of this is it appears that, from a construction perspective, it's been a very successful project. And now it's our job to figure out how to finish paying the bill. But they've been here every month, Commissioner Grunder. They meet every month.
I, I, listen, I, I will tell you this. This is not a shot at you. This is, this is something else. This is not a shot at your company, it's not a shot at what you guys have done out there. What has happened out there is absolutely needed, and it was in dire need of happening. And it's allowed us to move this city forward, so. In no way, shape, or form is any frustration you see out of any one of us directed at you or any colleague or construction or anything else. It's simply that here we are again. And it seems like every time we go and approve something, the next week, we're told that we now owe something. And then we approve it, and everything's fine, and now we owe. And, you know, that's not fair. And it's, I, so Jared, you guys, fantastic, absolutely. Any recommendation letter you guys need from us, I will gladly give it. I know Commissioner White's will, I know our city manager will, I know anybody sitting up here would. It's nothing to do with you guys, you guys are the consummate profession.
I will say, thank you, Commissioner. And thank you guys for approving our recent contracts. We try to help you guys bring as many, you know, grant funds as we can, like the CWG project. And yeah, I just want to thank Jeremy Marshall, Jason, Richard. Because, yeah, before, you know, this project's been through a lot of different administrations. And now that they've been on the scene, it's been, you know, a lot more transparent, easy to communicate with, easy to work with, get things done. We're at the finish line now with this project, so, yeah, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, okay, I, couple of questions, and all that information. In the beginning, the city was gonna pay three million, is that right? Okay. That was roughly a million from ARPA, a million from existing impact, and then the million from future impact fees. So with that, with the extra funding you got from the grant, it reduced some of what we owed down to two million?
We requested for the full amount to try to ease all the burden. And then they said, well, here's what we have available. So they, they issued for the remaining of the construction to be complete, and a million off of the city's burden.
Okay.
So that was, that got rid of the future impact fees.
Gotcha.
Line item.
Yep. The other POs that I'm looking at, all those got paid?
Yes.
Okay. And we made, and you said we made a 10% payment on that, when was that?
That was, it was very early on. I don't, let me see if I have it. I can look it up, I can look it up while you talk.
So with this coming out of infrastructure fund, what would be impacted now that this is coming out? I said, with this coming out of the infrastructure fund, what would be impacted? Because this amount is coming out, what's gonna be impacted?
So that's what this fund is for, is for your infrastructure? So there, that would be your sewer lines, your water lines, your infrastructure could be your roads too. So any of your infrastructure that the city would have, that's what's being impacted.
So that I'm saying, was this money already allocated for something?
No.
No, okay.
Emergency funds.
How many pancakes do we gotta sell to cover this?
What's that?
I was just kidding. I said, how many pancakes do we have to sell?
That's a lot of pancakes.
All of them.
But the way Commissioner White buys eggs and pancakes.
Hey now, we got a lot of money for the fire department there.
So our total bill is this 896 over here?
Yep.
But we're pretty sure we're not gonna have to pay that 17.
Nope, I'm not.
We are not sure. We're not sure.
We're positive, we're glass half-full.
Yeah, yeah. I'm optimistic, but I can't say we're positive.
So do you have a meeting, meeting scheduled or a phone call with somebody to confirm what amount we are?
We've been emailing this company since getting this bill, trying to find out, one, why was it so late? And wanted to see what it was about. The communication hasn't been real great. We heard back from them this afternoon explaining why it was late. But I am having, we're setting up a time to meet, to discuss this late fee.
Downstairs, we did have some phone calls too, but the problem was the person that we were getting didn't have the answers and had to push it up the chain. I'm sorry, I can't connect.
Okay.
I apologize. But I will get answers back to both of you. A lot of this happened when I was out, when I was on my.
When you were on administrative leave for three months when you were sent home.
That is correct.
Let's be honest.
So if you look at that, I was out from middle of December to middle of March. And if you look at all the memos of the budget changes, those were when I was out, and I didn't, just didn't know about it. But needless to say, it was a little stressful trying to work under those conditions, but.
How were we running when the financial director wasn't here for those months?
Great question.
I wasn't allowed to work at all, I was not allowed to.
How were we taking care of business?
I have no idea. Nothing, I mean, I still had a pile, I had a pile of work when I got back to catch up on it. Wasn't like, there was no one else that knew how to do, they can do any of it. I mean, Grace isn't trained, that's not her job.
Let's give one real, real specific example. ARPA money, you guys weren't, you weren't here at the time. The commission decided how to spend the ARPA funds. First blush, second blush, we redid, we redid. One of the things that we approved was a new elevator. The new elevator had a certain price tag, say fifty thousand dollars, that's not the number, but. Well, come to find out, when we bought the new elevator, it was not a turnkey contract, and we had to hire an electrician. Didn't know that we didn't need to get it wired up. So that work was, was done without bringing it back to the commission. And then we found out that the fire marshal required fire suppression in the elevator. And there was going round and round and round, for, I don't know, three months or so, where we were not supposed to be using the elevator, but it was being used anyway. So we needed to spend more money. That project, I think, went 100% over budget. That was never brought back to the commission, it was never discussed with the commission. We found that out long after the fact. So those kind of spending practices were happening every day, and we were not told.
So could ARPA money have paid this fully? This eight hundred or million dollars, could it have paid that?
We could have if at that time we kept it budgeted, yes.
Just have gotten us and paid this bill and be done with it? But then we just decide, I don't know what words I can use for this.
Be careful, you gotta go to church on Sunday.
This is why audits are late. This is why my job is so hard. This is the disaster that I've been trying to square away. So people can talk all day long about, oh, you're late on this, you're late on that. Every single day, something else comes up that we didn't know about, or had no control over. Or I knew about, and I tattled on it, and I got sent home for three months because I reported this wrongdoing. And nothing happened. So.
Seems like all that's done has created a deeper hole for you.
Tried to do the right thing. And it's, it's very frustrating for me, because what you're feeling right now, I feel every day. And I feel like I'm a failure, because I couldn't fix it. This is a huge mess. And I've tried my darndest to fix it, and alone, I can't do it. I've tried, that's why I have a consultant. I don't have anyone else to help me do this work. There's no, I don't have a staff of accountants to do this work. And it's a complete cluster. And it has been since I walked in the door. And all I've tried to do is sort it out. But the problem is, you have to continue to work, you have to continue to post things. So you gotta post them the best you can in the crappy system that's set up, and then still try to continuously go back and fix it. And, and, you know, I question myself every day, all day.
What, what you have now, though, that you, that you didn't have three years ago, two years ago, we're having honest conversations here, and that's what the people of this community deserve. And we, the five of us, are gonna have to figure it out. That's why we're here. So I applaud you for being forthright. We gotta figure this out, we have to pay this bill.
So that's where we are.
That's where we are.
Well, what we're here deciding is whether we use the cash to pay the bill, correct? Bill's not going anywhere, it's gotta be paid.
We don't have a choice.
There is no choice.
That's right.
You just do, pay it and be done with it, I guess.
So normally, because this is part of the project, it wouldn't have to come to the commission? Because you've already approved it as part of the project? The reason we brought it is the method that we're paying this. We wanted to be transparent that this is the last of the cash, until we get these chunks next, well, this month. This month chunks will come in, but we wanted to make sure you guys knew where we were at with it. And again, when I met with you each one-on-one, that's kind of what I tried to get across.
Can we tell you citizen comments?
You're the mayor, you get to decide that. Oh, that's true.
Well, I entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor, we have to pay the bill. I, I make a motion that we pay this bill using the emergency cash reserves we have now, with a singular focus on figuring out how to bolster those reserves again.
Second that.
All right, we're gonna have citizen comments now.
Good evening, Sue Weller. Since I only have three minutes, I'm gonna read through this very quickly. In January of 2023, the commission awarded a contract for the wastewater treatment facility in Westland, and Wetlands project. In addition to the grant monies, it was recommended that a million forty thousand come from ARPA, and nine hundred and sixty thousand come from existing impact fees. It was passed by the commission. In February 23, a purchase order was issued for the wastewater treatment plant equipment from Evoque Water Technologies in the amount of one million fifty-five thousand, a hundred and thirty-one dollars. In September 23, the city elected to buy some equipment directly to save on paying taxes, approximately nine to five thousand, which included the equipment from EWT. Change order number one was issued to decrease the original amount of contract price by one million five hundred and three, one million five hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. In December 2023, the city received an invoice from EWT for one million fifty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-one. In January 24, the city issued a check to EWT as 10% down payment on that amount. In May 2024, the city received an email from Mid Tower, providing a brief history of the project, explaining the city had pledged those ARPA funds and the nine hundred and sixty from existing impact fees. The same email stated a meeting was scheduled for that same month with the city manager and city staff to discuss the project history slash funding breakdown. In September 2025, the city received two invoices from EWT, one for eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and cents, and the other for fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars, fifty-five cents. The invoice for fifty-two thousand, seven fifty-six was issued on October 16th. Presumably, in February 2023, the finance department would have encumbered or noted that one million fifty-five thousand amount of money with the purchase, when the purchase order was issued. If not at that time, then in September 23, when the change order number one was issued. Where was this amount delineated in the fiscal year '24 or '25 budget? If it wasn't, why not? Why wasn't the commission advised of this expense after receiving the email from Mid Tower in May of 2024 on the project history slash funding breakdown? This bill should not have been a surprise, it was known by the administration, and now you're stuck with it. Thank you.
Ms. Weller?
Yes.
Where'd you get all that information?
I initially contacted EVO, the, I can't say the first name, the water technology people. They sent me the initial purchase order. And then on Friday, this past Friday, I asked for public records, Eququest, on everything dealing with this purchase order. And I received them on, well, I sent it out maybe Sunday, and I got it back on Monday, I believe, Monday or Tuesday of this week.
Thank you. Is there a reason she has more information about this than I do?
I got the information I got. I had a thing that I showed you on the one-on-one, and that came in at three o'clock this afternoon.
Okay.
Uh, Janet Evans, um, we've been having a lot of tough conversations here. Last few years, finances and stuff and we. I think that the public would really like to hear some names, some more specifics. I really liked your example, Commissioner White's, when you talked about the elevator. You know, it's fifty thousand dollars to do the elevator and then why aren't these things coming through and being approved up here and stuff? And I think people would really like to start hearing some names, really like to start pushing the envelope. What can be done about this stuff? Because people are just livid that we're, and, and like you say. New day, you know, what's gonna, what's gonna pop up next? And I think I'm speaking for a lot of people when I say, you know, but what, what can be done here? We, we all sit up here, I know, everybody tries to be professional and you try to be nice about it. And it's like, well, you know, they didn't mean it, or well, we didn't know. And I think people are tired of hearing that. I, I want to start saying, who are these people and what can be done? And if, if, if you can't do anything towards them, I wanna hear their names.
So again, solving the problem, making sure there's no more problem. I talked with Angela this morning, cause she's a charter officer and our HR clerk. And what we discussed this morning is starting next Monday, we will start looking at, how did it happen? Who's accountable and whatnot? So Angela and I will start working on that this Monday. We'll, so I don't have names because I don't have. I have names and I have facts to back it up, but I don't have all the facts and I don't have all the names. There might be more people involved.
Somebody's signing the purchase orders though, right? The signatures on them. Yeah, I, I think, I think we really.
And, and also further, I've talked to our attorney Danielle. And once we get further along in our process to see how this happened and who's accountable for it, we will see if there are steps that we could do to make people accountable throughout this. But I don't have all the names, I don't have all the facts, so I'm not comfortable doing that in a public meeting, Janet.
Yeah, I really, really, you know, I appreciate the transparency and that, I did, it's, it's really, really, we need it. We, we need it, we, we need to have some accountability, even, even if it's just putting a name out there.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. City Manager, um, how would that process actually look?
Which process?
In going to see who would be accountable for the.
Me and Angela are gonna be going through, we're gonna draw timeline. Well, you guys have already seen my timeline, I've drawn a timeline. But that was just a very, that was only one week's worth of investigating to see what I come up with. And I only focused on the facts. Now me and Angela will go through and we're gonna look at emails from. The problem is, we want, the, the terms that we would use in the email search is so broad. So if I wanted to get all the emails from Jared and the previous city manager about wastewater, we would put wastewater in there, you know how many emails have the word wastewater in it? So we gotta comb through a lot of emails to figure out what was done, who knew about what, and where the breakdown of the process was. So that's what the process will look like and that will take time, cause we got, I wanna look at, I'll, I'll put it out there in public, I don't care. I'm gonna look at all the emails from the previous city manager to the previous assistant city manager, city manager to the previous public works director, city manager to finance director. Same thing with the assistant city manager to the public works director and to the finance director. All emails from Mid Tower about funding, where the funding was, and that's, that's the process. So we'll be combing through a ton of emails over the next several weeks to find out how this happened. And again, if we can hold anybody accountable, we will.
Right.
And I got a text message from Danielle, if that meeting that you guys wanna have, she said she'll be happy, um, to have it. She'll, she'll come to it as well.
Right, any more citizen comments?
Rick Testa, and here in High Springs. Sitting back there listening to this, I find this just, everybody up there should find this amazing because this is how the system in America works. The people that live here, not any of you all that I remember, but some of the people in the audience tonight and certainly myself, we got up here five years ago, six years ago, seven years ago. Some people raised their voice and yelled, I didn't. I got up and I pointed to an individual sitting in the seat Commissioner Grunner's in right now. And I put myself out on a legal limb. I used the name and I used the, the record on camera, on a microphone. We had a commissioner that sat right here where Mr. Grunner's sitting and admitted taking graft from Duke Power Company, right here in this commission. The city attorney was sitting over here, didn't say a word about the comment that the commissioner made. I'm not picking on that commissioner, I'm talking about the people that lived here in High Springs that were voting eight years ago, ten years ago. It took those people ten years to flip this commission. Get rid of a city manager and assistant city manager and a city attorney. They were all complicit in what we call in America corruption. I don't think any of you have really understood me when I got up here. I handed out a, a piece of paper to all of you when you first sat down there to show you how corruption gets set up in a commission. Conflict of interest first, then quid pro quo, and then graft. Those are the three compositions of corruption. And we had it running rampant in this city, almost every individual on this commission. We voted in an entire new commission, you picked a, a completely new city manager. And yeah, you're dealing with a lot of the repercussions from ten years ago, eight years ago, five years ago. But you all have been doing the right thing ever since you got up here. I'm real happy that I was here tonight to hear you all talking about it. I'm sorry for what you're dealing with. We tried to warn everybody in the city and all we could do is go vote. And it took us ten years to flip this commission. But thanks for everything you all are doing up there. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Tatum, citizen and lives right at the wastewater treatment plant. So I know this is budget, uh, but some things have come out tonight that have totally. As an individual who lives right at this wastewater treatment plant, we knew that there were some issues with sinkholes and things of that nature. But it appears that there were a larger issues going on that have never been addressed to the city, let alone to the individuals who are living at that border. We've lost the amount of wood line that is between us for a buffering zone because they have expanded and expanded and expanded. Again, no information to us. There has been just numerous issues with this. What kind of issues would have come up if there were encroachments onto our property that would have been a financial burden to the city and to us as the owners of these properties because this project has been going on? And if these sinkholes had been pushed onto our properties? The reason I'm up here is because number one, there's gotta be more transparency. Plain and simple, especially for a large project like this. Because if not, individuals like myself and other individuals that live right there at the wastewater treatment plant or future projects, why should we have to be worrying about this later? And now what am I gonna be dealing with on the back of my property? What do I have to worry about with my grandchildren being back there and now finding out that there was a lot more issues than what we were being told? There needs to be a post-incident, as I would call it, with fire department, police department, review of this. Even if it brings a citizen board that needs to be created so this does not happen again. It cannot happen again. As a citizen, as a grandfather, as a father, no way. We should not be worrying about any of this stuff. Thank you.
All right, do we have any more commissioner comments? All right, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye. Aye, aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, um, city attorney, report an update.
City attorney has no report.
City manager, report an update.
So some parks and rec stuff, we had a huge success, thirteen soccer teams and eleven volleyball teams. We added in Babe Ruth baseball and flag football. Now we have over five hundred kids staying healthy and having fun. Thanks to all the coaches for their, um, or all the volunteers for the coaching and refereeing. Wanna remind you that this Saturday from eleven to four, you can come celebrate our veterans at the Douglas Warriors Memorial, Memorial Celebration at Catherine Taylor Park and the Douglas Community Center, brought, brought to you by the Douglas Historic Society. And if you, if you're on Facebook, I'm not, well, I am. Take a look at the Park and Rec Facebook page, stay up to date and everything is Parks and Rec. That's my report.
Commissioner?
Um, I attended my second part of the training for, um, Institute of Elected Municipal Officials. Went over a lot of things. Again, the property taxes is a big deal going on right now, there's eight bills out there. Um, but I want to encourage the citizens who see this and who are here now, uh, go on to Local Voices United, become a member, it's free. Um, you'll get a monthly newsletter about what's going on. The idea of, of it is to be heard in Tallahassee. Um, it, it's very, very informative and I, I, I really encourage everybody to do it. So that's all I've got.
Commissioner?
Mr. Marshall took the, I'll be, I'll be there at Catherine Taylor Park so we can celebrate those veterans. I love that they're doing that. Um, I wanted to, uh, sh, give a shout out to, uh, Mr. Allie Good's baby girl. Miss Amerispina was named teacher of the year at Newberry High School. And it is very well deserved, she's an amazing resource and my kid could not love her more if she were twins. So she looks like she's getting ready to have twins, but I think it's just a single, so congratulations, sir. She is wonderful. Um, I wanted to share with you guys in the public, in the wide open here, cause this is the only way we can do this, um, about a meeting that I had. And I'm gonna read just a little bit of the email string so you guys are kind of aware of what's going on here. Um, for those, our, our friends who like doing public records requests, there's more, but it's mostly just scheduling. This is basically the meat of it. Um, on ten sixteen, hi Commissioner White, I hope you've had a good summer. Do you have some time next week to meet with myself and a client of mine on the Bridlewood Development Project in High Springs? Wanted to touch base with you on a couple of things related to it, looking forward to hopefully reconnecting. And this was Mr. Jared Willis Esquire. Um, I had met with him the previous year to talk about a hospice project, so I had met him once before. I responded on the nineteenth, good evening, let me check in with the city manager tomorrow morning, if you don't mind, to see what available, availability he might have to meet. Can you advise what specifically you would like to discuss? The next day he responded, of course, sounds good, I wanted to talk about the recent Doge efforts, the legislature and governor's push on property tax reform and how we could re, how we could structure the project to help alleviate its impact on adwareum revenue. I responded the same day. Good morning, Mr. Willis, Mr. Marshall has indicated he has availability this coming Thursday. That would have been on the twenty-third, I think. Uh, would eleven o'clock meet, work? He hadn't responded on the twenty-second, I followed up, haven't heard back about the meeting time proposed. Can you please advise if that meeting time still works for you? He responded right away, six minutes later. Hi, sorry for the delay, yes, that works. I will also have Mike LaMelza with me as well. Was checking to see if that worked for him as well, see you tomorrow. I responded three minutes later. Okay, thank you, I am copying our city attorney on this string as well in case she thinks it would be appropriate to attend this meeting. Thank you, Catherine. Three hours later, I still had not heard back from Danielle, which is fine. Um, so I, I emailed him, good afternoon, I have not yet heard back from our city attorney regarding the possibility of attending tomorrow's meeting. She may well be in court today and unable to respond, respond. Given that you advised just today that Mr. LaMelza is the client of mine on the Bridlewood Development Project in High Springs, I feel that it would be ill-advised for me to take such a meeting without our city attorney present. As I'm sure you are aware, there's some fairly significant history already between the city of High Springs and this development. And I would be more comfortable having a meeting of this kind only with our legal counsel present. I certainly can't expect her to be available, however, unless in twenty-four hours' notice. And as such, regretfully, I'm going to request that we cancel tomorrow's meeting. So long and short of it, we were able to, able to schedule, Danielle dialed in by Zoom. Mr. Man, Mr. Marshall was kind enough to let us use his office and Mr. LaMelza, his wife, and Mr. Willis and I met. Um, the long and short of that meeting was basically, what's it gonna take for us to get you to yes on the CDD? So I wanted you all to know that that was an active conversation and I want people to know. And I was fairly resolute and pretty clear. Um, I think Danielle confirmed that I was, I was, I was direct enough. Uh, and then their next question, when they realized there was no getting me to yes on the CDD, their next question was, why were the other two commissioners a no? And of course, I have no idea why the other two, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, were a no. So you may be hearing from Mr. Will, Mr. Willis to schedule a meeting. And I'm just putting it out here in the public that they may be getting in contact with you. Um, I advised them about halfway through the meeting that had he told me that the meeting was gonna be about the CDD, I would not have taken it. I don't know what the, what their project is, but they were pushing that it's gonna be great for building, it's gonna be great for businesses for the CDD. Building the homes and having a robust business corridor has nothing to do with the CDD. So it was, we'll just say, a very direct and frank meeting. Um, and I will not be taking one of those again. I don't know where Miranda Holmes plays in all of this. I know that they are talking to Christie a lot about our developers agreement. And I wanna go on the record right now that the developers agreement is something that I did support and it was my only yes. And if we've got somebody coming in here to try to skirt around what we have in that developer, developers agreement, I do not support that. I, that, that developers agreement at least assured that we were not gonna have some kind of monochromatic, soulless, just add water housing development. So, um, I don't know what their plans are. I recommended to them that they send somebody in maybe once a quarter just to give High Springs an update on where they are, cause we don't know. Phase one A has been approved, I don't know how long ago we approved that. Four to one, I didn't vote yes, but that's okay. Um, they can build, there's nothing stopping them from building. So the, I guess they need the CDD to, to be able to proceed. That was the only takeaway I had, but I wanted to make sure that you all were aware of that meeting. Wanted to be completely transparent and that is all. Thank you, sir.
Chief Peters, I was wondering if you'd give us an update on taking, uh, ownership of the truck that's been out there waiting around?
Down, um, yesterday, went down yesterday, it's getting really close to being completed. We should have it, uh, first part of December.
And with the stuff that we have discussed earlier, where, what are we gonna do if we get that truck? Are we gonna put it in service or are we gonna hold off on it?
Um, my plan is to put it in service and, um, possibly sell the, uh, little squad that we bought to try to recruit some of those funds. And also there's some parts that came off of that, um, larger truck that we're, that we're getting the medium that we can also surplus and sell, like the front bumper, cause we put a brush guard kind of bumper on it. Um, the rear seat, cause we're doing a compartment back there. So there are some pieces of that chassis that we can, um, repur, or resell once we get, once we take delivery of the truck.
Is there a way, and if I'm asking the wrong question to the commission, correct me. After what I was requesting and I've asked Chief Peters to hold off on it till Mr. Marshall can give us what I was requesting, I want that truck off, I don't want it put in service. Till we get final answers about possibly amending the budget. I don't wanna put that truck and say it's used, even though it may be after a year. I wanna know if you guys are willing to, to back that and hold off. Not saying that we don't put it in service, but we've been without it for almost a year now. So, and with the stuff that's been placed in front of us tonight, I wanna be able to have an option of getting rid of that truck if we need to. If we don't and he's got a better plan, I'm okay with that. But right now, I think it's best that nobody's in that truck, using it, putting mileage on it if we can get a better price, if we need to go down that road.
I would absolutely agree with you, wholeheartedly, one hundred percent. We have, this is a game changer. What we just walked into tonight and in the last couple of weeks.
We have, this is a game changer. What we just walked into tonight and in the last couple of weeks, this is a game changer. And this, everything we decided on before probably would have been different had we had disinformation.
Yes.
So.
Not that anybody's going against the fire department, the police department, the public works, whatever.
Commissioner, if I may?
We just gotta look different.
We did discuss, we did discuss with the manufacturer, the apparatus, of what it would cost if we decided to cancel that order.
Well, I'm not saying cancel it.
I know, but I'm saying because we're so deep in, it would be a hundred and forty thousand dollar penalty plus the seventy-one thousand we've already paid for the chassis. So we allocated the funds to pay for this truck already. They're already, they're already there. We already allocated to pay for those. In the long run, putting this truck in service would save us money because we're, we're sitting with a brand-new piece of apparatus that's not going to need major repairs, you know, maintenance and things like that for several years to come. So that's the reason why, you know, I'm advocating, I'm advocating to put it in service once we get it. And then we can look at downsizing the rest of the apparatus that we currently have, like getting rid of that little diet squad and doing something different there also.
Can we just put that as an agenda item so we can get actuals?
Our next meeting is after taking delivery of that truck.
Yeah, I think we.
We won't, we won't. So we'll put it on the agenda item. We'll get some more facts on what the cost of it will look like. And when we take delivery, we will not put it in service until the commission acts.
Everybody in agreement with that? Does that suit everybody?
If I may, I agree with that, but if I could ask a question, when does depreciation hit, when it leaves a lot? Right? So depreciation's already gonna be hitting whether or not we put a mile on it or not.
If we don't take delivery of it, we're gonna lose out on a lot of money. So my thought process was to take delivery of it, and then once you guys decide what you wanna do with it, we could sell it. To build a truck, it takes a long time. There's a huge backlog on building these trucks. So if we have one with however many miles it takes to get from the dealership to our station, we'll say fifty miles, we'll have a truck with fifty miles on it that's ready to go, and that's how we would advertise it if you decide to sell it. There's fire departments that would want it. But we will, I will get as much data as I can for you so you can make a good decision on what to do with that.
All right. Our employee of the week this week is Alex Goltiris. He went into a storm drain, and he pulled out some debris, and it was a very tight space. So he is our employee of the week this week. And we just wanna thank all the citizens that tuned in and all the citizens that are here on tonight. Thank you for your patience with us, and we look forward to.